It is August the 20th, 2019, 6:00 PM. It's actually 6:02. We're here at City Hall at 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I would like to point out that Councilperson Tony Allen is not with us at this time. He may show up later here. I'd like to call upon Kevin Spencer with the pastor at the Center Point Church to do our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by our Mayor Pro Tim Tony Mobley. All rise, please.
Join me in prayer. Lord, we take this time and we honor you. Thank you for the women and men that serve our city. I pray that you would make your word known to them and that their desire to lead well with integrity for everyone in Granbury, that it would be quick and effective for everyone that is affected, in Jesus' name. Amen.
After you join me in the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and joining our council meeting. We've got a couple of special presentations. The first presentation we have, I'd like to introduce a young gentleman sitting out in the crowd if you want to come up here, David Smith. Come on up here, David. This is not on your agenda here, but David is a 10th grader, 10th grade student at the North Central Texas Academy, and he's a member of the Boy Scout Troop Number 2001. He's joined us tonight in the audience. David is working on his citizenship and community merit badge and is attending the City Council meeting to help him advance at that goal. So I thought I'd just go ahead and confirm that he is here with us by calling him up here and recognizing that. David, we look forward to your reporting back when you've earned your badge. He's also, he's here tonight with Jennifer Smith, who is his mother, and also a teacher out there at that facility, and she's sitting right there. We look forward to seeing you here again, okay? Our next presentation, you know, we do these every year, but it's a good thing, and I enjoy doing them. And to stand up here and do this presentation, I'm going to call upon Ava and her group Don't look so happy. All right, all right. The City of Granbury has once again received the Government Financial Officers Association Distinguished Badge Presentation Award for its budget for the 2018-19 fiscal year. Award recipients have pioneered efforts to improve the quality of budgeting and providing an excellent example for other governments throughout North America. The City of Granbury is one of over 1,600 participants in this program. For the city to receive the budget award, it had to satisfactorily nationally recognize guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines are designed to assess how well an entity's budget serves as first, a policy document, a financial plan, an operation guide, and a communication device. And I'm going to pause just right there a little bit because our communication device is one of, I think it's excellent. And I had some citizens talk to me just the other day about how well they were able to go into that, that website and look at what the city was spending and stuff. And so I was talking to the staff today, and they said, you know, if citizens out there think there's some things that could be done better with that or make it more user-friendly, please let them come up there. So they are open, their doors are open for comments or suggestions on how they can make that even better. But it is, it is a great tool for the community, and I encourage everybody to get in there and just look at it and see what they've done because it's, it's really a great tool. This award was not only presented to the city, but also recognized the individuals who primarily responsible for this achievement. Those individuals are, and I guess he's not here tonight because he's not standing in front of me, is City Manager Chris Kaufman. There he is.
I'm behind him all the way.
He's all behind him, right there.
Literally.
I'm sorry, I didn't call you up here, Chris. Director of Finance Eva Gregory, the Assistant Finance Director Elizabeth Bailey. And then we have another one here.
She was here last year, but she played a huge role in preparing the other four issues.
Very good. We could actually bring the whole department up here probably and line them up because that's how important it is. It's a great deal. But because of so many plaques that we have hanging on the wall, some time ago, they started putting the little coins on one plaque so that we don't run out of room real quick, and that's what was happening, you know? So I'm going to present this with them tonight. There's one item on there, and that is consider approving the City Council meeting minutes of August 6, 2019, regular council meeting. Council, you've had an opportunity to look over those minutes. Are there any changes or amendments to that, to those notes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corrigan.
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Tony Mobley. Council, any more discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. I'll make a notation here that Mr. Allen is now with us. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Our next item is our deliberation agenda. That first item being our public hearing on the proposed property tax rate of 0.399385 for the fiscal year 2019-2020 for the City of Granbury. Here again, council, this is merely a, I'm sorry. At each of these, at each of the hearings, the governing body must announce the date and time and place, and we will do that as we go along here. But on August 6, 2019, the council voted to place the proposed adopted property tax rate at .399385 on this agenda for the future city council meeting as an action item. During this meeting, the council set the date, time, and location for the two public hearings. And the second public hearing and the tax rate will be held on August 26, 2019. The first one being tonight, this is the public hearing. So at this time, I will open up for public. If anybody in the public wished to speak on this tax rate at this time. Hearing none, I'll turn it over to the staff here. Chris, do you have any more information on, on our tax rate here proposal?
What I would like to do, if I could, is play the video that we've got prepared that explains our budget and further explains why the tax rate is where it is. So who's going to play that, Carla?
She's got it.
The Granbury City Council is getting ready to make one of the most important votes of the year, the annual city budget. Your elected officials must decide each year how best to spend $52 million for our community to help guide these decisions. The City Council has strategic pillars. Your elected officials must decide each year how best to spend $52 million for our community to help guide these. The Granbury City Council is getting ready to make one of the most important votes of the year, the annual city budget. Your elected officials must decide each year how best to spend $52 million for our community to help guide these decisions. The City Council has strategic pillars. They include public safety, infrastructure, economic development, tourism, development of city-owned property, and utilization of Lake Granbury. In the last five years, the Granbury population has grown by 3%. Services have to keep up with demand of this growing population. More people means more residential and commercial property. The property tax rate has stayed under 40 cents per $100 valuation for the last seven years. This makes us one of the lowest property tax rates in the area. Plus, the city property tax rate is the lowest tax rate residents pay in Granbury, behind the Granbury ISD tax and the Hood County rate that includes the library and lateral road tax. It's not just Granbury that is growing. Hood County was recently ranked as the ninth fastest-growing county in the United States by the United States Census Bureau. All of this growth means the City Council has a lot to consider when adopting a budget for Granbury. The City of Granbury's budget is made up of four funds. We're going to start with the second largest, the general fund. The general fund mainly gets its funding from sales tax at approximately 48%. The second-largest revenue source is all the property tax that does not go to debt repayment for large projects. Other sources of revenue come from licenses, permits, court, and park revenue. Altogether, this equals about $18.6 million to take care of many important services for the city, starting with public safety. The general fund covers police, fire, and code enforcement. In Granbury, just like most cities, the majority of the general fund goes to public safety services for our community. But this fund also covers other major community services. The roads, parks, recreation, and public spaces our community enjoys come out of the general fund. Some major highlights for the general fund in fiscal year 2018-19 were growing commercial and residential developments, park upgrades. This included work at the Neely House Boat Dock, Granbury ISD donated property development, and purchasing of land for future development, swings at the Jim Burks Firefighters Memorial Park that was funded from citizen donations, beach safety initiatives including additional fencing, beach monitors, and city-provided life jackets. We also invested $2.1 million to purchase the ladder truck and pumper truck for the Granbury Volunteer Fire Department. The city has also adopted a seven-year comprehensive street rehabilitation plan. In 2018-19, the city funded over $1 million for the first phase of the project. Looking ahead, some of the big projects for the general fund next year are another $1 million for the second phase of the street rehabilitation projects, $200,000 in park improvements, $350,000 in information technology upgrades, and additional $50,000 for police equipment. General Fund is also adding a planning technician for community development, another part-time parks laborer, and continuing to hire summer beach monitors for public safety. With the growing population comes a need for additional investment in public safety. This year, the city will be committing $990,000 to hire and equip five new patrol officers and one new criminal investigator, and purchase two additional police vehicles. The city will also implement a competitive salary adjustment to help the department attract and retain good candidates. In the upcoming years, the city is also planning to construct a standalone police station to better serve the community. Now let's talk about the largest fund, the utility fund. The utility fund provides for our community's everyday needs such as electricity, water, and sewer services. As the population grows, so does our service demand for both water and electric services. The city's utility fund is run more like a business, as the revenue the city takes in from water, sewer, and electric customers covers the operating expenses for those services. Some major utility fund projects in 2018-2019, finishing the $17 million water distribution system expansion project and building an elevated water tank, developing and implementing an updated impact fee and capital improvement plan, starting a five-year phase out on all city electric meters to the AMI smart meters, an annual tree trimming initiative as preventative maintenance on our electric lines, and preventative maintenance on manholes. Additionally, there are several large ongoing projects for the utility fund in 2019-2020. The city is upgrading the current wastewater plant to newer treatment technology and beginning construction on the East Wastewater Treatment Plant utilizing $50 million in bonds for additional water and sewer infrastructure. We will also be completing Phase Two of the water treatment plant, which will grow its capacity from 2.5 million gallons of water per day to 5 million gallons of water per day. Funding for these projects would not have been possible without the city's ability to access low-interest financing through the Texas Water Development Board in order to staff the additional facilities and serve the new development. The utility fund will add seven new positions, one city engineer, one additional lineman for electric, one water quality technician, two wastewater treatment plant operators, and two utility operators. The final two funds are the airport fund and the tourism fund. The airport fund is used to account for revenues and expenses related to the operation and maintenance of the Granbury Regional Airport. Capital improvements for the airport are funded primarily through grants. For example, the airport runway project is funded through a $15.7 million grant from Tech Dot. Phases One and Two of the airport's runway project are complete. Phase Three is currently underway. When the project is completed in 2022, the airport runway will be 5200 feet long and 75 feet wide. Our budget relies heavily on sales tax, so it's important to our economy that people visit and spend money in Granbury. The city's tourism fund is for the city's Convention and Visitors Bureau, or CBB. The CBB has two major components, Visit Granbury and Lake Granbury Conference Center. Two other cultural centers, the Langdon Center and the Opera House, are also accounted for in the tourism fund. The money for the tourism fund comes from the Lake Granbury Conference Center revenues as well as revenues from the hotel occupancy tax, or HOT tax. The CBB uses that HOT tax revenue and invests it back into activities that will promote more growth. This includes promoting Granbury's events and festivals, marketing Granbury as a tourism destination, running the visitor's center in downtown Granbury, highlighting Lake Granbury activities, and much more. Now that you know a little more about the city's proposed budget.
What we're trying to accomplish in the coming year, and I also want to talk about the tax rate a little bit. The tax rate is the same rate that we adopted last year. I'm happy to say that it, even though we don't need to meet the law that was imposed for next year, this tax rate, adoption of this rate, will meet within the guidelines of that new law. So it's very conservative, our budget's very conservative in approach and our taxation as well. In fact, if you take $100 of however much you spend on local taxes, 20% of that comes to the city, and the rest goes to the county, 22% will go to the county, and 48% will go to the school. I appreciate what the legislature did this last session by addressing school financing and attempting to work on, you know, limiting local taxes. And we have implemented that same mindset here. We want to keep our taxes as low as possible. But here's, here's the big difference that we've seen, and it's going to come out in the school tax, the school tax reduction. Our M&amp;O tax typically generates about $2.9 million, and, and that's the same as this year. It's going to produce about $2.9 million. Last year, the school sent just in a little less than $9 million to the state from property taxes that they collected from our citizens. And so they've changed that to where they're only going to be submitting about $1 million this year, is what superintendent told me, which will allow them to reduce their taxes by seven cents. And so that's going to be a huge savings. It takes them from, from being 50 or 60% of our tax burden to 48%. So it really worked out nice, and we're proud that we're able to accomplish that. And the legislature, give them credit for taking care of that. They did that. There was a lot of blood, sweat, and tears over the tax rate and how that will affect counties and cities, and they came up with a hybrid plan at the end, and, and that's what we're living with. And this tax rate that we've adjusted, that we were proposing to adopt, lives within the guidelines of next year's law. So it's, it's really proactive in thinking and planning so that we won't have a big adjustment next year whenever we need to implement the law. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. And Ava has some facts and figures that we need to share those as well.
Okay. Ava? And folks, while Ava's coming up here, I apologize. I will allow you to make some comments after the presentation because it's an opportunity to hear about the budget again, see some of the things. So we'll let you have opportunity, if you wish to speak a little bit about some of the stuff that you've just seen or heard, then you'll have those opportunities. Ava?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager, City Attorney. I think Chris covered it really well, ran over the tax rate. The only thing I want to add to that, if you had a chance to read your staff report from August 6, when it was originally presented, we wanted to share with you that we have already put a notice in the paper so our citizens would know that our effective tax rate for the, that was calculated by the chief appraiser, was low over 37 cents. It was 37.8691 cents. While the city is proposing to adopt the tax rate, the same tax rate that we had last year of the 39.393%, 39.93 cents, it's only 2 cents more than last year, than the effective tax rate. And that will allow the city to generate about $276,000 more. As you have seen the budget video, what we are going to be using these funds for, just maintaining and providing the quality of life services for our citizens as so many people move to Granbury and meeting the needs of our citizens as the city keeps growing. And another important fact is the rollback tax rate that's again was provided in the notice, that was low over 45 cents. And because the proposed tax rate is higher than the effective tax rate, and I wanted to share with you again that the effective tax rate is the tax rate that would generate the same revenues for the city if the same properties were taxed last year as this year. So the new properties are not included in that number. That's the effective tax rate. That's how it's calculated. But because the proposed tax rate is higher than the effective tax rate, that's the reason we have to hold two public hearings, and one of them are held today to allow the public to provide their input. Another fact I wanted to share with you is we reviewed the tax rates, what Chris already shared with you, and I wanted to also tell you that, just to give a little input on what this tax rate means to our citizens, the 39.9385 cents for each $100,000 house, it provides a tax bill of just right under $400. For a $200,000 home, it's $798,000. For a $500,000 home, it's a little under $2,000. So if you look at it monthly, the monthly bill for a $100,000 house is only $33 a month, which is less than anyone's cable or phone bill, as you know. So the tax rate, we are very proud to be able to maintain the same tax rate and be able to provide the services that were presented to you. At this time, if you have any questions, please let me know.
I have a question, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Allen?
There's very few $100,000 homes in Granbury, Texas. I bet you the average would be closer to 2, 250. So you're looking, you said $73 a month on 100,000?
No, it's 33.
$38. Oh, 38?
$33 and 250,000.
So if you've got a $400,000, you can take a time forward. Okay. The other question is, is just a question for, I guess, the city manager. You know, we understand when a school rolled theirs back, they had to extra money, and we understand that. About three years ago, the county rolled theirs back taxes about 4%. Why haven't the city ever rolled back their taxes? Well, that falls to this council's decision, that's why. So if we asked that, we would relook at it and see if we could roll back 4%, y'all be happy to do that? You saying 4% or 4 cents? 4, 4 percent.
4 cents, yeah.
Well, we should have talked about that. I mean, we can do whatever you want to do, but we should have been talking about that at the budget workshop and everything since then. But yeah, we, we're queued up for the budget that we presented, and if you want me to go back and cut things, then you need to give me some direction on that as well. I know when you left the budget workshop, you made a remark that we'd have to go up on taxes. Then you came out in the paper and said, we're not going to have to go up on taxes. You figured a way of doing it. How'd you figure a way to do that? Well, we've got that on Agenda Four, Agenda Item Four, to go over that with you. We can do it then, if you like. But this is just a public hearing, there's no vote on this.
This is the first public hearing, right?
Yeah.
Council, any more questions to Ava? Like I said, once again, if there's people in the audience that would like to comment or, or to speak on some of the things that you've just seen or heard, then I'll welcome that.
Can we comment on the video?
Pardon?
Can we comment on the video?
Sure, you're right on up there. We always want some.
Can we set a timer?
Positive comment, yeah.
It is positive. Thank you very much. I wish that calls, see how very few people here? And the ones that gripe are not here. I wish there's some way that you could get that out. It was excellent. We do wish that some of the, was that Bethany?
Yes.
Wonderful job. She just needed to be louder for us older folks. We could not.
Julia, we could hear fine.
I know you could. I said for us older folks, some of us little, so if, if you can make her voice a little louder, is there a way that we can get that out to clubs and to people so that they can see it? Because that is an explanatory way to say, this is where your dollars are going.
Right. We showed it to the Rotary Club. Welcome for somebody to take it to the Lions Club in the Kiwanis. Just let us know.
Is it just on a hard?
But it is, yeah.
Invite us, we'll come share it.
We have that available for, for folks who want to look at it. I, I don't know if, it is on the city website. So if they go on the city website, like I talked about earlier, it's pretty easy to get on there, and they can watch this, that video.
It is, it is.
And we do it on social media as well.
But I will guarantee you, I may go on your website, Faygo's on your website, Bob goes on your website, but probably we're the rarity. I wish more people would go on the website and see what all the city does, but I just wish, thank you for that. It's an excellent way.
It's on social media as well, if I'm not mistaken. But here's the thing.
Share it on our Facebook. Bethany, can you get to us? Can we get it, where we can share it on our Facebook? Okay, good.
Julia, here's the thing, we can make it available. We can't force people to watch it.
That's right, that's right.
And as excited as I get about our, our budget talks, there's not a lot of people out there that, they want to complain, but they don't want to learn the facts.
That's what I'm saying, but if you could get it where we could get it on our Facebook, then, then we might could get it to other people, and those people that are griping might understand better what, what you're going through to get us where we are.
We love your optimism.
I just love Granbury, so.
Thank you, thank you. Other Stewart?
Well, I'm glad there's not a lot of people here, because I'd rather make a fool of myself in front of a small audience, but I'm not going to speak long, I'm just going to ask a question. We are a growing, thriving city. The longer I'm here, the prouder I am of living here. Is this enough of an increase to handle the, the progress and the growth? It is a rare question. And I'm asking it, I'm not asking it.
That's a fair question, and you know, and exactly what that video shows, when you look at it and you look at the type, the tax rate that we have here and everything that we have that goes along with it, you know, we're, we're blessed. I mean, we, we are able to do those kind of things, and just like we, the challenge that we give our city manager here not too long ago, that Mr. Allen just talked about, you know, we weren't pleased with the fact that we were going to have to raise, raise the taxes. When I say raise, you know, a significant amount. And we put the chances, we will still want the things that we've asked for, but we want you to be able to work them into the budget here that, you know, that we're, that we've seen coming at us. And you know, your effective rate is what they calculate that it takes to operate. And when the effective rate comes in, high or low, but you know, then you adjust your, your needs and stuff. And so we're right there, really close. And so being able to stay with the rate that we have right now, which is not increased, we're just staying with what we have and not going to the effective rate that came in just a little bit lower, you know? And we're, yes, we're able to do all the things that we need to do, but we're right, you know, we're, we're banking that we're going to continue to grow and continue to have these things come where we may probably have some extra money in our pockets and stuff. And I think Chris will, you know, he would elaborate on that a little bit, if you would, Chris.
So we, we conducted our budget workshop, I presented a budget, and, and within that budget, there was a significant tax increase. It was made clear to me that what the priorities were at that budget workshop and what wasn't. And so I went back and, and
And so I went back and, and worked on the budget, and reduced things that weren't as high priority as what they had been in the past, and gave more weight to the new things that had been prioritized. And we also had a strategic planning session earlier in the year, in February, where that was established as well. And so, um, the, the biggest, the biggest change that we're experiencing right now is public safety. You know, we, we're servicing the debt on, on a ladder truck and a, um, another pumper truck, and that debt, um, comes out of this property tax rate overall. It's interest and sinking, and it doesn't affect the effective or the rollback rate, but it's still part of that tax. So we've got about half of that, let's call it forty cents, it's just under a couple of mils of forty cents, half of that tax is going, a little bit more than half of that tax is going towards debt service, and nineteen-point-eight cents of it is going towards the general fund, to make up that approximately two-point-nine million dollars. And so, with, with that formula in mind, and that growth, and then we need to do a market rate adjustment salary for the police officers, and, to retain and keep them, as we mentioned in the video, and, and then we need to, more, uh, staffing for the police, all that came into, as a big ticket, and that was a priority, so we, we eliminated some things to, uh, to get there, and we'll talk about that in our, our, our budget workshop we're going to have here in a minute.
Okay.
And that's going to give the council an opportunity to change things if they want, or increase things.
I just wonder if, if you have a lot of things that are optimum, I don't want to say wish list, but optimum, uh, how, how you all make those decisions to go less than optimum?
Yeah, it's tough.
Uh, that, you know, I know everyone wants their taxes lower, and their services better, which doesn't compute, especially with growth, so.
You're exactly right, because if you, if, for the folks that do show up at the work, the budget workshops, there are wish lists, there are things that the council decides on, well, we just can't do that this year, we can't do it, you know, so, they go on the, either the back burner, or they go away, you know, but there's a, it'd be, if we had that list out there, some people might say, well, why did you not do that, or why didn't you not go ahead with that kind of thing?
You get second guessed either way, but, but this community will continue to be more and more attractive if it keeps up with its growth and its taxation.
Here's an example-
Again, that might be heresy for me to say, but so be it.
Here's an example of what I cut, and, and Ava will cover all this in a minute. We had one-point-two million dollars budgeted for paving, and we trimmed it back to a million. The goal was a million, but we were trying to get a little more, but you know what? Two-hundred thousand dollars is two-hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
And the amount of increase between the, they're going to call it no new tax rate next year, what we call effective rate this year, the, the, the amount of that increase is two-hundred-seventy-six thousand dollars. And so, that's what we're trying to maintain, is that little bit of incremental income to make up for some of these other, we could cut the street project by three-hundred thousand and, and go back to the effective rate, if that's what the council wants to do, that's real easy fix, but, you know, at the end of the day, we're not meeting our goals that we said we wanted to do in seven years, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
But it's up to them to change the goals if they want, so.
Oh, yeah, company.
Anybody else, uh-
Oh, yeah, company.
Wish to make comments? Thank you very much for those comments, those are, that's, that's what we need to hear up here, you know, and says exactly how you feel, how you, you know, what you see out there, and, and the questions, you know, that you have about, you know, how we got where we're at right now and stuff, so that's, thank you for that. Counsel, any more discussion on the, uh, proposed tax rate? Here none, like I said, uh, we do need to go ahead and we, we will continue to announce that, uh, the, uh, the date, time, and place for the meeting at which we will vote on the tax rate, will be September 3rd, 2019, at 6:00 PM, here at the regular council meeting. The second public hearing will be at the city council meeting on August the 26th, at noon. Hopefully, those folks that can't make the evening ones can make some of those and, and be here available for that. So, so I'm going to close the public hearing, counsel, no more discussion, we'll close the discussion. Our next item is to consider awarding an RFP number eighteen-nineteen-dash-o-four for electric system line construction, and I'm going to turn this over to our city manager, Chris Kaufman, he'll make a recommendation.
So, when the, when the agenda was put together and, uh, sent out, we were geared and ready to, to approve an award to Volt Power LLC to redo some power lines. Since that time, we received a letter, uh, saying that they need to decline from doing that work at this time, and so what we would advertise or recommend to you is to reject all bids and put it out for bids again. Uh, we received two bids, and the other bid didn't meet all the criteria of what we wanted bid, so it really disqualified itself, and, um, so that's why we were where we were. And due to competitiveness of sealed bids, we need to, um, you know, shut this down, and, and let, let us go through another round of bidding. We've engaged our engineer that did the design project, to do a bid packet for us, and see if he can get more bids for us than the two that we got advertising on our own, so, um, that's, that's staff's recommendation. So at this time, we really don't have anybody that successfully bid on the project that, that met the criteria of the bid.
Thank you, Chris. I see you got Rick in the, in the chute there, he's in-
Yeah, he's, he's backup, if you need him.
He's in the warm-up cage, okay.
We'll keep him in the chute if we can.
Counsel, do you have any, uh, any, uh, questions or concerns about this item? As you see, the staff has recommended a decline on that, so do we have a motion and that such?
Some move.
We have a motion to decline the motion, or, a motion to decline all the bids and put it back out for bid, and let the staff do that.
Second.
We have a bid, a motion by Councilperson Mobley, and a second by Councilman Wadley. Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Prove to decline all bids and put it back on, out for bids. Item number four is to discuss the proposed fiscal year 2019-20 annual budget, and I'm going to, once again, turn that over to Chris Kaufman and his staff.
So, you know, this is, uh, probably the, uh, last public meeting that we'll be able to have to disclose, what you've already seen in the newspaper, as far as the changes, so Ava's got a, a summary put together of the changes that we've made administratively to put together the budget, that's been on file with the city secretary since the end of last month, as required by our city charter, and, uh, this is summary of the changes that we made, to help us balance the budget with the tax rate at thirty-nine, whatever it is, three-eight-nine, or whatever. So Ava, I'll turn it over to you, if possible.
Thank you. Um, on, uh, June seventeenth, we had a budget workshop, at that point, uh, council had, um, an opportunity to review the proposed budget, and we gathered the input and guidance council provided to us, and was able to, uh, city manager and staff was able to go back and make some modifications to our budget. But I wanted to, uh, make sure that I do say that, uh, the annual budget was submitted to our city secretary and to council on July 31st. It was available to, for inspection to the public at that date on our website, it's also available at City Hall, for anyone who would like to review the book. It's a very extensive book, as you have seen it before, so we have paper copies or, uh, electronic copies, and that you are able to use to review. It will be, it has to be on display, on, available for review for thirty days, before the tax rate can be adopted. And the public hearing is scheduled to be held on the budget on, uh, September 3rd. Uh, with that, I wanted to also say that, um, we have talked about this now several times, but, um, when, uh, our city manager, Mr. Kaufman, went back and reviewed the budget, and, um, gathered all the input from the council, and direction from the council, it was clear that, uh, public safety was one of the initiatives that we needed to look at, and ensure that it was included in the budget to meet the growing needs of our ci- city. And based on that, um, based on council recommendation, and, um, um, we were able to go back and make some changes that are presented to you on this one page, and these are the changes that were incorporated after the budget workshop, after we had that workshop review, but the changes are already in the proposed book that was submitted to you for your review as well. And, uh, so I wanted to start with the general fund. On the, for the general fund, um, what we've done is increased both revenues and ex, uh, expense projections by eight-hundred-forty-five thousand dollars. And on the revenue side, what we were able to do is increase the utility franchise fees paid to the, by the utility fund, to the general fund, by four-hundred-twenty thousand dollars. That was, um, a matter of increasing the percentage, uh, from four to six percent. We increased our sales tax projections by a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. We were able to do that because we are continually monitoring our sales tax, and, um, currently we are up about three percent, and, um, our projections, even for next year, are, um, still under the, than the projections we are, uh, foreseeing to end up with in this fiscal year, which is about eight-point-seven million dollars. Additionally, we have increased some of our miscellaneous revenues, um, by a hundred-thousand dollars, these are revenues, uh, for, um, plumbing, electric permit fees, developer fees, uh, gas franchise fees. We continuously, uh, monitor our revenues and ensure that, uh, the trend allows us to make these projections, as we are, um, in our, in our, right now, we are, uh, ten months into our budget, so we, we are able to recommend to be able to do that. And lastly, we increased our fund balance, the general fund balance used, by two-hundred thousand dollars. So that's how we increased our total revenues by eight-hundred-forty-five thousand dollars. On the expense side, we made the following changes. We have increased, uh, contingency expense by a hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Let me, let me kind of address that for them, so that they'll understand what that is. Um, we all know we're talking about creating some more of economic development, and what I did is I took that money out of the economic development fund, and I put it in contingency, so that, so that when the agreement is struck, we'll do a budget amendment and move it out of contingency, so it won't be spent until you dedicate it that way. And it could come up with something else in emergency, or whatever, you decide to do something else, but that's what I did on that one, so.
You answered our questions.
Next.
Thank you, and, um, to add to that, uh, contingency expenses can only be spent, um, by council approval, so they will stay in there until council approves to, uh, spend it on, on expenses. So, um, the breakdown on the public safety are the following line items, we have been able to add three-hundred-sixty-five thousand dollars for, um, competitive, uh, salary adjustment for our police officers. We also were able to add five patrol officers for, um, the amount of three-hundred-forty-four thousand, three-hundred-ninety, and one, uh, criminal investigator, uh, for a hundred-and-nine thousand. These figures I just mentioned include all the benefits and taxes as well. We also added two police tajos, um, as requested, and that's a total amount of a hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars.
And that includes all the equipment for the new vehicle, because of the new staff, see, we're going to have more staff, they do, you know, laptops, everything, radios, consoles, everything, light, bar bars, everything, so, um, that, that equips each vehicle, two of them, so we, normally, we don't have to spend that much, because we, when we buy replacement vehicles, we're able to take the equipment off and move it into an, an old, a new unit, so, at some point, you got to replace it, but we use it as long as we can, so, we've got it budgeted.
In order to fund these expenses, we also had to make some reductions, and, um, we reviewed, um, with, um, city manager, with the leaderships of our city manager, we reviewed each department's line item, and we were able to make the following reductions. In the police department, operating expenses were reduced by forty-two thousand dollars, street maintenance in total was reduced by a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, economic development, as Mr. Kaufman mentioned, was reduced by a hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, and some other miscellaneous expenses were reduced by eight-thousand-four-hundred-fifteen dollars. So that's how we were able to balance the general fund, um, in the amount of eight-hundred-forty-five thousand dollars, uh, increasing revenues and increasing expenses. On the utility fund side, we also made some changes. On the revenue side, we have increased our electric revenue projection by two-hundred thousand dollars. Um, this includes, um, some of the new growth that we know is coming in, and, um, and covering that, that's how we derive this growth, there is no rate increase on the electric, um, rate side. On the water, um, and sewer, um, revenue side, we have increased water by seventy-five thousand, and sewer by twenty-eight thousand dollars, and we were able to do that with the slight rate increase that was added to the proposed budget. So the total increase for the utility fund revenues is three-hundred-three thousand dollars. On the expenditure side, um, we had to increase the franchise fees, the utility fund is paying to the general, general fund, as I mentioned before, by four-hundred-nineteen thousand dollars. We increased some miscellaneous expenses, uh, just right under four thousand dollars, and in order to accomplish, uh, some of these increases, we also had to reduce, uh, some of the line items and proposed, um, investments in the utility fund by, um, forty-five thousand dollars, we were able to reduce the budget by forty-five thousand dollars, and that is, um, because we are able to hire a water quality tech position, so we had some savings that we were able to realize on the maintenance of hydrants, so that was in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars. We have also, um, moved, uh, Menhole Forms Project, that was requested for this year, to next year's budget, that was in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars, and we have reduced our electric CIP investment by fifty-seven thousand dollars. It is still in, uh, budgeted in the amount of two-hundred-eighteen thousand, but it was reduced by fifty-seven thousand dollars. So that also equals, equals, uh, three-hundred-three thousand dollars, so those are the changes we meant, uh, we made on the utility fund side. And with that, we were able to offer or introduce a proposed budget, a balanced proposed budget, that have included, um, the priorities and, uh, directions we received from the council. At this time, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions for, uh, Ava or Chris up here on the, uh, proposed budget?
Well, I do.
Mr. Allen.
I was hoping other people would look into it, maybe it's nothing to worry about. How much increase are we going to have on our, uh, you got water, well, electrical, you got growth, it's going to take care of, two-hundred thousand, that's new business, I guess.
Yes.
No increase in electrical?
No.
Okay, and water, you say final rate increase, how much is that?
It's four percent.
Four percent.
Four percent?
Four percent on water and sewer, we were at three percent, we added another percent.
Okay. And, uh, the last question, I know we discussed this in the, at our meeting, uh, let me find it here. Economic, what, what are we doing with a hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, uh, or a hundred-and-twenty-eight, you, you start, I will go, Chris, and-
You bet, we, during the strategic plan workshop we had, we talked about working with the county-
Yeah.
And, and the chamber, to create an economic development again, and, uh, there's, there's interest in that from the newly elected, uh, commissioners' court, and, and there's also interest from the city council to do that, but realistically, we couldn't get there this year, so we were looking at next year to try to stir that up. So, that's why I moved that money from this plan of economic development fund into that contingency, so that it would be earmarked, so to speak, for whatever y'all want to do with that future agreement.
Did the county did not come through, or what?
I have no idea, we just weren't able to work with everybody to get it all organized. You know, we've been having these meetings here-
They're in the process of passing their budget, too.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't, I mean, Mayor, okay, but-
So they're in the process of passing their budget, too, so we're in, we're in the hopes that they are having the same discussion about this item.
I mean, we all up here love Mike Scott, and he's a great guy. I met Mike same, same time as they're looking for a home, and we- And we've done this before. It didn't work.
What did we do before? I wasn't here.
Well, we had it with the county and with the, with the city, which the, why, the chamber always wanted to be part of it. How much money is the chamber putting into this?
Well, we hadn't got an agreement at all yet.
Okay.
So, this one is.
We're just gonna get a hundred and twenty-seven and say, we're ready to give it to them when it comes.
We're gonna sit over here and, and, and.
I'm sorry, I can't hear Mama down there.
Mama?
I was just.
You, Mobley.
I was just saying, we, we're gonna put it in this earmarked contingency account. If and when the council comes to an agreement to, to go into some sort of economic development corporation or some kind of promotion group or some kind of consortium where businesses are participating, we'll have some money that we can, as a council, decide to put in there.
Great. Good to work.
And Council, Council, now, you're exactly right, there have been several types of it that have, I don't know, that, that didn't work or they just, they fell apart for what reasons. And as we've, we've been looking at what we want to do, we want to find somewhere, we've researched to different towns, different communities that do it differently. We, we want to find out what actually fits Granbury before we pull the trigger and do something that we've done in the past and, and, and know that it doesn't work and put money into it. So, we want to, like Chris said, we're gonna earmark it so that when that time comes, whenever we do join up with whoever we join up, whatever we do, what we decide to do, that we have those fundings that we think necessary to, to get this thing off and running.
I have no problem with that, Mayor. I just, I mean, like I said, I'm a member of the chamber, but I know for twelve years I haven't seen any dust roll, been brought in here by the chamber.
Right.
They've been working really close with us.
On the last one, you're correct.
On this big one, yeah.
On the last one, you're correct. But anyway, that's my two cents.
You know, I might just.
To answer the gentleman's question, I agree with him that we need to spend all we can spend. If we need more money, we need to spend it. But one thing you gotta think of, it's just like the congregation in your church. If it slows down and tides start coming in, it's hard for those doors to be open and pay the bills. It's the same way here with our city. Right now, our county and our city is doing great. I mean, they're, I'm seeing a slowdown in the four hundred and plus homes, but the rest of them are still moving. If that day it stops, and it will, probably during election year, we will make sure we got reserves to take care of that. And Chris is doing a great job.
Thanks, Mayor.
I'm doing that. You're welcome. You're welcome.
I, I would like to add that what we have identified as a barrier to a strong economic development corporation is a steady, non-politicized stream of funding for administration. And, and that's the challenge, is to create something that is sustainable based upon membership where it's not at the whim of, of a political body to say, you know what, I don't like the way you're doing this anymore, let's stop funding it and it'll all die. That's not sustainable, and we don't want to go down that path again. And we, we're with you on that. We understand that.
Yeah. Great.
Mr. Mayor.
Captain Mobley.
So, as far as the economic development, hopefully, we, we've realized, we've had several workshops. We, we've actually been working with the county to improve the relationship and to move this forward. Let me stop and ask our city manager, who has been in charge of economic development over the last several years?
That would be myself.
Do you think you need, because, hey, I'm thinking if you can do that and be city manager, maybe we ought to put Public Works on you, Police Chief. We could save a ton of money if we just knock all this stuff out. What do you think?
I think that, I think that, that I'm a good pinch hitter for you, but at the same time, realistically, let's face it, we need somebody that goes to bed at night thinking about economic development and waking up in the morning about economic development, and that's all they're thinking about. And my job is much.
I want to remind you of all the things that you are declining to do when you negotiate your contract next. So, going forward, I'd like to point out the things that you're not willing to do for us.
I'm willing to do anything and everything that, that's for me.
So, Rick, Rick Crowe, over, pack your bags.
No, no, no.
So, okay, on a serious note, what would you say is our growth rate, really, for the last couple of years, and how do you see it going forward?
Well, I see our growth rate, based upon the census for the entire county, at four point nine percent. I think the city is somewhat lagging in that, probably in the three percent range. However, our comprehensive plan anticipated two percent. So, we're exceeding what our comp plan provides for in planning, but we, yeah, maybe China paid an import tax. Anyway, we, we have enjoyed some strong growth, and I bet we're probably around four percent. As soon as these large subdivisions get released to be able to start building houses, you're gonna see an influx of additional growth.
Probably more than four.
The, the Census Bureau has us at over ten thousand population. And so, that's a pretty strong growth from seventy-nine eighty from twenty-ten.
So.
At county commissioners' day, they announced that Hood County is the fastest ninth, fastest growing county in the whole United States.
Yes, ma'am.
The whole United States, number nine.
That was on our video, too.
Where you been, Fay? We've been talking about that. No. So, thank you.
So, we're growing at four percent projected, maybe even more than that. What is our budget increase for this year?
Well, we went from about forty-nine million to fifty-two million.
So, I'm not good at math. What is that?
That's less than five percent.
Okay. So, we're basically keeping up with the growth. And would you say we have to make an investment in these neighborhoods as a city before people get here, or do we wait till after they're here and we start collecting the tax money?
Some, well, some of the cost is indirect, it's public safety, providing public safety. When, when a subdivision comes in, they're responsible for putting in the infrastructure and the roads, and we're, we're responsible for inspecting and making sure that fire hydrant is, is gonna flow the, the water that's needed.
But we don't wait until everybody's moved in before we start patrolling that neighborhood?
We, we don't have enough staff to patrol neighborhoods right now. So, that tells me where we're at.
What I'm saying is, we have to stay ahead of this growth. We can't wait for it to happen and then say, now we're playing catch-up. That's my whole point.
We're, we're, we're truly playing catch-up right now in the, in the police department.
Right.
And, and.
Well, and I'd like to apologize to, to Cliff and Mitch, and, because we couldn't do the sixth.
Right. Yeah, we, we trimmed it back. You see that we, they wanted, and I agreed with them. I mean, we were at ten or eleven to start with, and we, we went to six for the budget. And then, when I came in and did all the cutting that we could, we agreed on five. And so, you know, we'll, we'll work on it next year for something else, but for now, that's the best we can do.
Right. Well, and it's, a lot of this is baby steps. So, so going forward, and, and a lot of this was discussed a couple of months ago, but we'll remind folks that, that maybe didn't hear all of it. But these are tough decisions, and nobody wants to cut a budget. Everybody wants, everybody wants their own pay raise, but they don't want to pay more taxes so the folks that work for the city get a pay raise. And that's, and that's what we miss in this whole equation. We always, always want to get a five percent or an eight percent or a ten percent raise on our paychecks, but we don't want our staff, apparently, they're supposed to live at a level and we never go up. And that's, I think that's what's getting missed in the, oh, never pay more taxes, because the price of bread, the price of milk, the price of gas is gonna go up, but we don't want to pay more for our streets, our police, and our fire. And with that, I'm just gonna.
And just to, just to warn you, the, the mentality that I've developed over the last three months is, is looking at the next budget cycle, trying to look at how we, how we bring up these lower-paid employees. I mean, we've got some extremely, I don't want to go into that, but there's, there's some people that are struggling. They're, they qualify for free and reduced lunches at school, and we understand that, but we need to help them more for what they're doing. And I'm gonna address that in the next budget. And I don't know how it's gonna look or what, but I really want to look at that.
And it goes back to wanting to keep the people we want to keep and allow them to live here and work here. So, I, I for one appreciate your effort.
Thank you, sir. It's my privilege.
Seven hundred million, or nine hundred thousand.
Total cost for the police with the, the, the equipment and the salary adjustment and the new positions is just under a million dollars.
Yeah, I was thinking, I've seen on here for salary increases, almost a million dollars.
Well, the, the overall salary increase for all the city employees at three percent adds up to what, Ava?
Um, probably.
Well, the police department adjustments are three sixty-five, and that's about seven thousand dollars per position.
Yeah. So, the new positions are about one point three, plus the increase. So, that's maybe one point five, one point six.
For the whole city?
The whole city.
Utility and general.
So, I agree with Mr. Mobley, maybe we should make it increase six percent or eight percent, fair and square.
Never said that. I didn't say that one time.
I'm sorry, I missed an decision.
Believe me, if you want to do that, we just have to raise the property, you know, property tax rate. Because I've raised everything as much as possible.
I apologize to the police, I agree with, if I heard it, I'd be right on that. I agree with that.
We're, we're extremely excited about your receptiveness to doing this. We were, we're really excited. Our police staff morale is, is good high, and they understand that y'all are concerned, and we're doing all we can for them.
Council, any more discussion to the staff on the budget? Here none. Well, well, thank you, Ava.
Thank you.
Close the discussion. Like I said, there, we'll have our upcoming meeting to approve the budget in September. Our next item is to discuss, I'm sorry, the next item is to consider selecting two city council members to serve on the steering committee for the parks master plan update. I'll go ahead and turn this over to Chris to start with, but I think he's got somebody to speak.
Well, you know, we've hired half an associates to do our master park plan, and they would, they've suggested that we put together a team of stakeholders in the community. And we thought it might be appropriate to see if there are two council members that have the time and the inclination to serve on that stakeholders group. Not, not to run the committee, but to be a part of it and, and to be able to help us as we plan our future. We've also asked for some county officials, if they're interested. And Aaron is here, if he'd like to explain any of the details that need to be, be more than welcome to do so. But it's pretty simple, we're just looking to get a couple of stakeholders, like we did on the comprehensive plan, to, to be involved in that process.
How about I just answering questions?
There you go.
Actually, Aaron has given this presentation in different places, and it's, it's a great, it's a great plan to, first of all, to get the whole community involved in the parks and to get the county involved, get some citizens involved, getting the, the council involved, and getting folks involved, because we're going forward, we've got some, we've got some pretty good-sized parks plans or some things that we're gonna be doing in, in the Lambert Branch out there and the, the different things that we're gonna be doing. And we're, we're looking for citizens, and even other organizations to help out on these things. And so, it's good that we have a variety of, of people that will be serving here to, in the different, you know, categories to, to, to be able to help out on this, right, Aaron? I mean, it's, it's.
What's the time commitment?
Three meetings.
They've already started.
There will be three of these steering committee meetings. There'll be one in, yeah, September, and we've already got that, that date set for the seventeenth, and then there'll be another meeting in November and January. And I, I might add that council will have the opportunity to meet with just the Parks Board also. So, that'll be a different, different meeting. But we're looking for two councilmen, and as you can see, I believe you had this included in your handout, that some members of this committee will be city council, a couple of Parks Board members, one or two members from the new Granbury Cultural Arts Committee, some staff members here from the city. And we're reaching out to some Hood County Commissioner, Brazos River Authority personnel, and even with our athletic associations, so they can all, because we, we need their feedback as to what they think about our facilities, you know, like, for instance, these athletic associations travel all over, many of them do play in ball. I play, my girl, I got two dollars, so we play volleyball. So, I don't travel around and see all these other athletic facilities. So, they can give us better insight on how ours compare, what they're used to, and what the, what they're seeing the new standards are for some of these facilities. And that's just a, a good example in my mind of why we want to include some of these representatives from our local athletic associations.
And again, there's no mandate to, to do this, but if, if it's something you've got an inclination to do, we should appoint you to it and, and get right with it. But if, if you don't have the time to be able to do it, we understand that, too. Believe me, you're not sitting around on your thumbs doing nothing. I understand that.
Mr. Mayor.
That's why I was gonna nominate Tony Mobley, because he just sitting around, you know, he's got plenty of time to do it. Go ahead, Mr. Mobley.
So, you've got the first one set for the seventeenth, which is council meeting day. Is that on purpose, that we're gonna do on council days?
It's on purpose. And we've been in contact with city manager's office, trying to schedule some meetings. So, on the seventeenth, we're looking at from ten to eleven-thirty a.m., and then we're looking at having a meeting right before the six o'clock council meeting with just council and Parks Board members. So, the way this will be set up is the associate, or half, is trying to have three or four meetings over a two-day period, because this first set, on that following Friday, they're gonna have the big public meeting where they'll have workstations, invite the public to come give their two cents worth. So, they'll be set up over a two-day period where you would be involved. We don't have any dates yet for November and January. It'll kind of depend on how this ball rolls, but we would try to, you know, give you three weeks notice, two or three weeks notice on dates and times. And certainly, we'll be reaching out to city manager's office so they can kind of coordinate with y'all on the other meetings where you're all involved.
Well, I'd ask the council, do we have any volunteers?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Who, who's that?
Me.
Bruce Wadley. Mr. Wadley, okay.
I, I would be happy to volunteer.
There you go.
I'd do that.
Okay, we've got two volunteers. We have any more volunteers?
I'll do it.
Greg said he would.
Greg? Now, we're gonna put it up to a vote.
Tony said he would, too.
Hey, if you'll do it, do it. I mean, I, I would do it in case nobody else would.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no. Thank y'all.
So, you're, you. So, Mr. Mobley is saying he'll, he'll turn it over to you guys, so if anybody else want to do it?
Thank you, Mr. Mobley.
I've got, I've got Councilman Wadley and Councilman Corrigan have volunteered to serve on that committee. We'll go ahead and vote on that. All of, do I have that motion?
Somebody.
I got the motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Reiner. All in favor of those selections, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There you have it, Aaron. You got two council members to serve on that.
Thank you, council. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman. Our next item is to consider approving, is to consider approving updates to the city council, the city of Granbury council procedures pursuant to Texas Government Code five-five-one point oh-oh-seven. You want to lead into this?
Sure.
Chris, go ahead and give us a little definition of what we're doing here.
So, basically, the legislature met and passed House Bill twenty-eight forty. That, that changes our governing policy a little bit, and so we need to put this into effect tonight, so it'll be in effect in accordance with state law come our next meeting in September. But basically, what they wanted to do, and Jeremy's researched this and has drafted these changes for our policy, is allow, they wanted the council to allow the public to speak on any item on the agenda. And instead of it being a subjective decision made at the dais on public comment or not, they've making it mandatory that anybody can speak on any subject at any meeting. And so, as you know, we have our public comment period once a month, and, and that will continue. But in addition to that, the citizens will have an opportunity to sign up and speak on any agenda item. That's basically what we're establishing in our policy.
At every meeting?
At every meeting.
And, and council, what, what we're doing tonight is just approving an update to our rules of procedures, which we can do all, these are the things we do usually in November, but we can do them all year long, make changes to that. And, you know, approving that will set the stage for how we want to do it. We're not gonna vote on how we're gonna do it. We're gonna figure out a, a best method for that. I have researched some other communities, how they do it, and there's some different ways to do it, but we just want to make sure that we capture this and that we're doing it, that we're doing it the right way. it, that we're doing it the right way. So, that's all we're doing is approving the updates to allow, to, to do this actually at every meeting. And they're basically, like Chris said, you'll roll out, you'll have, you'll still have your public, public hearings, your, your public, open to the public, you also have your, what we call our citizen participation and this will be considered citizens' comment times, so.
So, I might just add that, you know, we have statutory public hearing requirements that have to be conducted. And so, the, the, the determination of, of how that works is still out, they didn't really promulgate that in their rules. So, we're, we're still having to plow through how, when you have a public hearing required by statute and then you close it, statutorily, you can't reopen the public hearing, so we've gotta flesh all that out at some point. So, that's kinda what we're up against, but this is what we're doing tonight, this is proposals to our public rules and procedure, governance rules and procedure.
Basically, the update of, is there anything you need to add to that?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
We got a good attorney taken care of.
Where's he at? Okay.
He can come to me.
Okay, council, you've had an opportunity to, to look at over there, thing, so is there any questions for Chris or myself or Jeremy?
Do we need to make a motion on that?
Well, yeah, we gotta, we gotta approve to update them, that's what we're doing. Like I said, we're not, gonna make a motion, how we're gonna do it, we're gonna make a motion to update them at this time.
So moved, Mayor.
So, I've got the motion by Councilman Allen to, to update the rules and procedures.
Second.
And I have a second by Councilman-
Corrigan.
Corrigan down there. Got you confused or something. Any more discussion on this item? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. We look forward to coming up with something that fits really well with our council here. At this time, I'll now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened into an open session and that all the members are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in these following sections, section 551-071, consultation with the attorney, section 551-072, deliberation regarding real property, and section 551-087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiation. We will now recess into executive session. It was now reconvened in an open session, there was no action taken in executive session. Counselor, is there any more comments or items that you'd like to discuss? Here none, the council is now adjourned.